Thanks, everyone. Sorry for being a couple of minutes late. We are here on April 29th, 2024 for a special meeting of Lake County BOCC. We just have one agenda item to consider the transfer of a land lease for the community solar project.
Mr. Pilar, I think there's actually two, three items. We've got the amendment to the IGA with Lake County School District regarding the transfer of the property and a resolution before that.
I am very sorry. I was focused on one agenda item and I forgot that we had added those. Sorry, can you repeat those?
So it's the second one is discussion and consideration amendment to the governmental agreement, IGA with Lake County School District to expedite land transfer to Lake County Government. And then discussion and consideration resolution 24-13 for the expedited transfer of land for an portable housing project from Lake County School District to Lake County Government. It's a description of the lots.
Great, thank you. And apologies to everyone. I had literally brought home. Let's start off with the first agenda item. And I think I'll start off, I think, laying out for a discussion with the commissioners on sort of the paths here. So for background, the issue is that there is a community solar project that has an existing land lease. The LLC under which that project sits has an existing land lease with the county. It's operating on county property. C4 is a Cloud City Conservation Center. C4 is working to set up its own LLC to take ownership and to try to get that property back up and running. So the issue for the county is working through the potential transfer of that land lease so that C4's LLC can operate on the county land. So I think there are two or three pathways, just to recap where we are. In discussions we've had, including the work session last week, there are, you know, the existing land lease could be improved upon in some aspects. And so one pathway, and we have had some back and forth with some comments, we could try in this meeting to work through the remaining issues. The second pathway is we could, for now, we, the BOCC, could consent to transfer the existing land lease and agree to try to work through mutually desired changes. That would obviously be mutually agreed between the two parties down the road. And the third path that I'm not recommending, but just a path, is that we don't consent to the transfer. And C4 doesn't have that land lease transferred. So I think those are the three sort of general pathways. Again, figure out the new land lease, transfer, consent to transfer the existing one from one LLC to the new one, which would facilitate C4 moving forward with its transaction or no action. I can take a breath and let fellow commissioners chime in on clarification of thought, or I could offer my view on which pathway we should take today.
Or do you want to hear any of the background in terms of the current issues with the current LLC and the fact that they're in bankruptcy? There's some issues in terms of...
I think, Chris, I'd like to talk, hear the views of the commissioners and talk through, just understand which pathway we're going down. I think my view is we've read and heard, you know, in our last work session with some of the email back and forth. I think we've had that issued, aired, like an... Offer where I think the consensus view of the BOCC is?
I support option two. I think C4 is a good partner. They have a track record of doing beneficial things for the community. I think the subscribers deserve to have the power in this project. And there are, though, there are some risks involved. I think the risks are manageable. I think those things can be worked through. So if you can put me on the record as supporting option B, I think we should start moving forward with letting C4 take this on.
Yeah, so just to make sure I understand, two was consent to transfer the existing lease with sort of a verbal understanding that we seek to reach mutually agreeable changes to make it a better land lease.
Yes, Brian, future.
I don't have, I want to make this happen as well. I do wonder from C4 if there's, to me, the three terms in the new lease were, or three maybe larger sticking points might be the rent, the term, and the indemnification. So I'm wondering if we think we can talk through that here with better language and a revised lease.
Can I ask an additional question related to that? To C4, do you feel like, as the chair of the board, or the attorney, or the executive director, do you feel like you have the mandate from your board to have a negotiation in this meeting of some of those terms that Sarah outlined?
I'll speak. Our legal counsel has advised the existing lease is adequate and fine to move forward with, and our board has unanimously approved us moving forward pending the transfer of the land lease. So that is fine. We don't mean those changes in order to move forward.
Correct. Because I think there was more comments, just except for just those three provisions, right? Like those, I mean, I don't know how to rank them because it was just kind of a... It's been a lot, right, in the last few days, just to digest everything, so I don't prioritize provisions of them.
Yeah, and I don't want to put words in your mouth with this question. So I mean, if we were to try to go down the first path of opening up the document and in real time, looking at some of the red lines and comments, if we were to, like, in our minds, resolve them, do you feel like, I mean, do you feel like you would have to go back to your board to get sign off on those changes? Or I guess it depends where some of the discussion went. Again, I just, I mean, typically, we would try to have, like, a final document that has been worked through. So I don't want to put pressure on either side or anyone in this moment.
Just to clarify, like, I think you're asking two questions. Do we, like, one, do we think that we want to make revisions to the lease? And two, do we need that board approval? On the board question, no, we do not. There's no requirement in our board's approval that those changes are reflected in the lease. I think I'll defer to you two whether we want to open that document or not and open that conversation. I think we've been, from my perspective, we've been having that conversation for weeks and that did not come to an agreement. And so for the sake of the land, the lease transfer happening and for us to be able to move forward with acquiring it, my personal opinion would be no, but I will let them speak.
I would say, yeah, I don't think it's going to be worthwhile exercise to actually open the lease in the session and, right, negotiate back and forth when, like, we're here. Go outside, come back in, right? I don't, it's just normally not how.
I think we attempted over the last three weeks to negotiate with the county in good faith, and we will continue to negotiate in good faith after this. We do not have any large issues with the existing lease. We understand that there may be things the county wants to change, but I don't think negotiating in this session would be beneficial to C4 or the county.
Okay, I appreciate that. I'll say for myself, I'm definitely willing to go down that path number two, consenting to transfer the existing lease. I did want to, if I could, Sarah, just quickly come back to Chris, your comment or question to us. Like, my sense of the BOCC on this question of sort of unresolved issues around the bankruptcy and, you know, slew of related questions or issues on that. I feel like what we talked about in the previous work session was there's essentially sort of two phases of risk for the county, or two phases of this, or steps, I guess we're calling it. One is, I mean, C4 is taking, hoping to take on ownership from the existing LLC. And at that, at this point that we're considering today, the county is not taking ownership. You know, our risk to mitigate, and we have contributed to the legal fees, but we don't have any direct ownership stake or, you know, investment, new investment to lose. You know, if the county has to put forward significant funds for step two of the technical repair to actually get the facility operating, then maybe there's a different discussion. And I think, you know, there's interest to make sure, you know, that we do our diligence when it comes to that step. But I feel like your sense of the BOCC is that the risk management, you know, approaches is that we do not need to dig further today into the bankruptcy issue and those related risks for this consent to transfer the land lease step. So if seen in general, no, it's... Yeah.
I just want to be clearer, too. I'm assuming the newly drafted lease has some other language. Although, in reading through the old lease, I am not clear what offers more strength, what the new draft offers in terms of more strength than the old land lease. Because I don't necessarily object to the terms in the old lease. I'm just wondering if there's other legal language that puts the... I mean, I can't, not having gone line by line with both side by side, I don't know what that is. And is it, is it like the indemnification piece primarily and/or?
There are issues with it, is what I'll say. And I understood my guidance from the BOC last week to be either to provide comments on the old lease or to propose a new lease, which is what I did. That is based on the same lease used by a couple of other counties, including El Paso County, which is involved in the bankruptcy with CEC. And so that's kind of what we built off of. The information that we have at hand now that we know what the situation is. And so the old lease, there are a couple of issues primarily with it is the term. Here you've got a facility that's fully built out, and the term of that one is going to extend it beyond the useful life of the equipment that sits on the property right now. And so the county is going to be tied to a term that's far in excess of what's there. And the county's already invested $715,000 in this, right? That was their initial investment to help get this built. And then to come back and say, okay, we're going to invest more to help get it operational now, too. And then to be in a situation where in 10 years or so, when the solar panels all have to be replaced, which, by the way, we have no confirmation that they're actually owned by anybody except for CEC right now, then the county's going to end up probably being approached by C4 to help work with those panels and stuff. I'm just, for the record, I mean, just for the record, I feel an obligation as the county's legal counsel to say, I think this is premature, that we are being rushed into a decision based on the representation of a representative from CEC who said they had to have this done today or it was turning, being turned over to bankruptcy trustee. They've got an extension until June 17th before they have to do any more findings with bankruptcy.
Chris, Chris.
I mean, this is trying to protect the county in its essence, some sort of, that's my legal opinion.
I appreciate that. It has been received here, it's been received in writing. And now I want to come back to the commissioners and keep talking about what our action is today. Sarah, I wanted to come back, I mean, I think there's some important questions there on the differences, understanding the difference between the new and the old. My sense is that, again, coming back to the initial framing of the steps, you know, I feel like the place to figure out those differences and come to a sort of county position on what are the desired changes? We probably need either an additional executive session with Chris, with, you know, with the county attorney's office, you know, or some one-on-ones to understand those. I, frankly, wary that we're going to be able to figure that out in this.
That's fine. If one of the biggest objections is the term, I think that's up to the board anyway. And I don't know that we object with the term, the terms in there. I mean, I think if C4 is going to seek funding to support this, then they need a longer-term lease. And there's a provision in there, I believe, where if the whole facility doesn't operate at all, then we talk.
Yeah.
So I guess I was looking for other specifics in the revisions other than the judgment on the terms.
Everything about the existing lease is one-sided for CEC. I don't know who reviewed that before it was accepted by the county, but there are numerous issues with that. It's not a balanced lease. It's definitely not in the county's best interest. It has provisions in it that essentially encumber the county's property long beyond the lifespan of this facility. And that's something that I think we've worked hard over the last couple of years to try to revisit agreements with entities in this community that do that in a way that's not in the best interest of the county. And when I say in the best interest of the county, it's not the BOCC, it's the county, it's our residents, it's the community itself. And not catering to certain special interests in the community without input from the rest of the community members as to if that's what they want us to do.
Okay, and Chris, again, I appreciate that you're on the record stating that. I still feel like we, for...
No, y'all are the decision makers. I'm just giving you my best legal advice. It's up to y'all to decide whether you want to accept it or not.
Thank you. Would, I mean, Sarah, do you, like, I think there's a lot of questions. I mean, you know, we've been talking about it, there, you know, I think we could keep talking about, like, provisions in the lease. I think for me, if we discuss further, you know, differences between the old lease and what we might desire in our new lease, it would be to have the discussion about what we would want to work on going forward. I'm still, I feel like kind of leery trying to resolve.
Well, I wonder, yeah, I'm not going to harp on that necessarily, but having had you review the new draft, and there were some, like, if the rent is the same as the old lease, the term is the same as the old lease, there's... It's not currently in there, but if we agree that the new draft incorporates those same aspects, is the new draft acceptable to C4? And does that...
I mean, quite frankly, I had lived here suited at 10. I had to drive over here. So did I review everything that was commented on? No, because there's just wasn't time. Because I live in a room, so it took over an hour to get here. I mean, we...
I can speak. I think we are, we've said all along that we're very open to a new lease, but the answer that we've received for two weeks or until Friday at noon was that wasn't possible. And we were not informed that anyone from the county was working over the weekend. And so at that point, we had informed several of the commissioners that we weren't able to go forward with a new lease anymore because of the time. I also just want to point out that we're not CEC. We're C4, we're your neighbors. We're not entering into this to try to, like, do anything to the county. We're trying to protect your investment. And we are more than willing to negotiate in good faith. We have leases with other entities within the county, including the school district. And so not asking to move forward, asking to move forward with the existing lease is not an attempt to, like, sneak something in there. It's to say that we felt that so far negotiations have not been fruitful. And ultimately, regardless of the bankruptcy court, we have a deadline that CEC has placed on us. And their staff have made it clear that if we aren't able to move forward, that they're going to walk away. And this asset will no longer be retrievable by C4 or any other entity. And so we do, we are beholden to that, whether that is the court's bankruptcy notice or the client just saying they aren't willing to negotiate anymore because this has gone so far. And so that's really what we're trying to do. We're not, I think we're open to a lot of different things. There wasn't anything specific, other than I would say that generally the leases that have been presented to us so far do not feel like, they feel very one-sided to the county. When this is not C4's investment, this is the county's investment we're talking about.
So there needs to be a level of trust.
Yeah.
That C4 is going to do the right thing, and you're not out to get the county, right? Come after us for money or land or our children, right? So, all right.
And for the record, I want people to understand, I have no objection to C4 taking this on, not at all. I'm just saying I think it's premature. We haven't completed the due diligence. I don't think C4 has completed its due diligence, based on the information that we've discovered and tried to share with them and stuff about this. Part of me is the concern for them of what they might be stepping into that...
Chris, I'm sorry, as county staff attorney, I just, I don't think that's your, I don't think that's the county's role to opine on C4's level of due diligence. And I think we also talked about that before.
I'm fully confident to revisit my...
I was not asking, I was not asking you that.
Not at all.
I think at this point, at least to get the motion on the table, it's like, look for a motion to consent to the assignment of lease for the document presented here, which is, to be clear, the assignment of the existing land lease to C4. So call for that motion if anyone else...
I'll second your motion.
Or make a move to him.
I'll second.
Okay. So of course, we can amend that or discuss it further. I don't want to rush calling for a vote if anyone has more questions.
I'm fine with a vote.
Yeah, I, well, I'll make a comment. I mean, I think, so my understanding is, is that I think there are, there are some issues that we should talk about, and we can figure out whether that's with the BOCC in executive session, you know, or one-on-ones. But I think we should get a clear sense of the direction we would like in a future mutual, you know, mutually agreed amendment to this lease. But, you know, so to my mind, this motion and vote in a minute or so isn't closing the book on that. But there are some real questions that we just haven't gotten run to ground, been able to agree to the new one. So I mean, do you see this as sort of an interim decision and we'll work in good faith, as you said? We'll get clear direction on terms that we'd like to revisit moving forward.
And the consent I sent over was, like, at 12:30, so I know that was like the last minute. I'm not sure that had changed for you that. As part of that, we're also asking for, which I think is going to discuss, the abatement of taxes for C4. And that's during this discussion or future discussion. I want to make sure we're clear about that, because it was the last minute I had sent over.
Yep.
I missed all the discussions here or there.
So I think the handling of the outstanding taxes is certainly one of the issues. I mean, the issues I have in my mind that would be, need to be discussed, I mean, it's rent, the term of the agreement, indemnification, and taxes are the four big ones.
Just one of those instances, like, struck on the consent that came over.
Sorry, what's that?
Oh, sorry, just that it was drafted with the...
I think what we were asking was in line with what we requested of the commissioners when we first had a conversation on this, was that any taxes or anything that was owed to the county by CEC is not passed on to C4. We're willing to discuss future. We understand we're responsible for taxes in the future. We're just asking not to be held responsible for the existing ones because there's not, there are no funds to pay those either on CEC's end at the moment or from C4 at the moment, because this is a new project and we would have to seek funding. And we couldn't do that by the April 30th deadline tomorrow.
Can you say that less sentence again?
So the deadline online for these taxes is tomorrow. For the last two years, it is our understanding that prior to last, prior to this year's taxes, nothing was sent to Colorado Solar, the community solar, the management group. And so we are asking the commissioners in the consent that we sent over to waive the two years of taxes that are currently due by CEC. We are not asking you to waive them moving forward for C4. We're just asking for these existing two years because we do not have, neither C4 or CEC have access to funding at this moment to pay them, and the deadline is tomorrow.
Yeah. Thank you for raising that. I guess, so going forward, I think that's relatively easy, straightforward. I think the... I think the, like, I do not understand, have not had time to figure out what, how, how the county agrees to that on the back of taxes. So I am reluctant to just sort of, like, blanket agree to that clause. Having talked quickly with the treasurer and assessor's office and some other staff, again, I'm not crystal clear on what we would write. I don't, I don't want to, because if you, if you want to weigh in on that, we can. I also don't want to put you on the spot without any prep.
I've, no, I've looked at it, but essentially right now, it's, it's the, it's EEC's obligation. The one thing they failed to do, and why the bankruptcy important, is the county should have been listed as a predator in bankruptcy, which it was not, because it was back taxes. There are other counties in Colorado that they've done business with that are listed for back taxes for that purpose. Once this lease is assigned, then all the responsibility for that would go to C four. And if you consent to the assignment, without them having liability for that, you're essentially walking away from those taxes.
I, yeah, so, I mean, that's my understanding with not enough due diligence time is that, like, I mean, when personal property is bought, like, liability goes with that.
I think there's another process that we could-
Yeah.
-consider an abatement and/or, like, you can, I mean, yes, the first quarter is ideal to get your taxes paid, but people keep paying their taxes through till the tax lien sale, so that can, I'm not sure that that's-
Yeah, I'm not concerned about the deadline, because, I mean, entities miss their deadlines, and the world goes on.
I think, given the way that negotiations have gone so far, my, our preference at C four would be assurance from the commissioners that that is not a liability that you're going to pursue against us. We have had to act quickly on this, and we're willing to pay them moving forward. But in our original discussion, that was something that was agreed to, that the commissioners would not pursue funds that were owed to the county by CEC against C four, because we didn't know what those funds were at the time. Now we know what they are. It's eight thousand dollars. I think the other option on the table would be the county covering those fees for us. I don't know how that works for you all to pay your own taxes. But again, we, this is a project that C four has taken on at the last minute. Our grant funders, our grant funding for this only applies to our legal counsel. And we can't ask them to pay any other costs associated with this. And that is an expense that would be significantly outside of what I am allowed to spend.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just say, my, this isn't like an opinion of what the right way is, just my, my assumption had been that if that liability transferred to the C four LLC, that, I mean, that would in a sense be in the same bucket as transferring the outstanding repair bill. So fix the inverter would be a cost that is gonna have to get covered down the road out of operate, you know, out of some revenue, whether it's grant funding or, you know, revenue from the actual operation of the system, that the AK would be covered, you know, at some point as the LLC has the assets to cover that. And just further on that, like, since the county is, my understanding, fifty percent of the subscriber base, it would essentially, I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna come out of revenue, which is gonna come from the benefit accruing to the subscribers. I guess my only point there is, like, I had not been that worried about, in, in the grand scheme of what it's gonna take to get this operating again, and the revenues that will come in once it does, the AK had not risen to my mind as, like, a massive issue.
I don't think it is a massive issue. I think it's that the conversations that we've had with the county so far, it's been very difficult to get information like this. It wasn't available online from our records until Tuesday of last week. And I think this is an opportunity, once again, for the commissioners to be a partner to C four in this effort and to protect this community resource. We are very open to paying them, I mean, we're going to pay them in the future. But I think whatever assurance is that the county can provide to C four that you are a partner in this work would be greatly appreciated.
I think maybe, though, if there, there's a different process to go through to do that. And I think it feels a little bit better to go through that process, which I think we want to do, than to include that in, in the agreement here, is what I'm hearing.
That, that, I, I tend to agree with that, Sarah, and just again, in the quick conversations I had, like, I, I, yeah, I think there's a better process rather than just ad hoc forgiving outstanding taxes. We can, again, I don't know what we, exactly what we say in this meeting, but I think we can commit to including that discussion in the immediate future discussions around amending the lease if we transfer the existing one. So I think, I, Sarah, I tend to agree with you that we should strike that paragraph two on the- Again, not, not because we violently disagree with it, just I'm not sure that's the proper mechanism in this, in this consent to do that.
I'll just say that's okay with us. It makes sense. Do you want to decouple that from this process and then go address that something?
So I think, I'm a little rusty on my rules of order, but to amend, what is the right way to make that amendment to the motion on the table?
Yeah.
So is the, is he? Okay, so I think we, it's, as you were the original maker of the motion, it's up to you to amend your motion with striking paragraph two.
So I amend my motion to strike paragraph two of this consent to assign a lease.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, alright. So I think first we vote on that amendment, and then we vote on the overall, my mother is the whole thing. Oh, because it was amendment, not a secondary motion, okay. Thank you, sorry. Commissioners ready to vote on this?
Yes.
Yeah, I think so. I, it just, just if we can continue to have a conversation and figure out exactly, I don't know whether that's our conversation as to whether or not we need to revisit the lease language and have something else to present with better time for review.
Yeah, so to be fair, my, my-
Let's try to, like-
Yep.
-handle that instead of letting something in your-
So, so my understanding of this discussion and some other discussions prior is that, you know, it's our clear intent to work on, you know, the work that already started with some red line discussions on a different document, but work on resolving these as mutually agreed. It would include rent, term, indemnification, and taxes at a minimum. You know, certainly those four items, not to exclude anything else, but we will seek probably an executive session with the county attorney's office. But, you know, whatever the right internal mechanism is, we'll have that discussion. We'll do it promptly. I don't know if we want to, I don't think we need to put a timeframe on it, because we're not under the deadline at this point, but like, throughout thirty days or-
Yeah, I don't know, yeah.
Yeah. But, yeah, promptly. So yes, that, it was exactly my understanding that we're, we still have work to do on, on, on those items, those issues. And also, I think, as we talked about, like, there, there is, you know, when it comes to the point of the funding for the technical repair, you know, I think the, the county, you know, the BSCC may also direct the county attorney to continue doing some due diligence on what our risk approach, you know, management approach is to that second step. So, you know, because that is a bigger financial issue. So we'll, you know, we can revisit what further work we want to direct done on the due diligence and risk assessment on that second step.
Might it be of benefit to drop one sentence in the consent about the county's desire to engage in continuing negotiations with C four? Because my concern is without that sentence, C four has an assignment and limited incentive to return to the table.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, for me, I, I see what you're saying. I think the burden is on us to do our further homework and get that straight. I don't, I mean, I don't know, I mean, so the clause would just ask C four to agree?
It is the intent of the parties to continue to negotiate X, Y, and Z, because without that, they can say no.
Yeah, as could we. I mean, I think that's my, again, I see what you're saying. I think, I feel like there's been a strong consensus on the BSCC to address these issues. I'm not really concerned. Yeah, I've also seen their, their comments. I feel like, well, I, I, they were in a recorded public session saying they're willing to engage on those issues. I'm not sure we need to, like, I, I, I'm not sure what the actual binding effect of language would be. We're not, you know, we had explored that language before of actually putting, like, a thirty-day, you know, requirement in and had moved on from that language. So, so again, I see what you're saying. I'm not sure that we could agree on, like, language that would actually have any kind of binding operational effect if the two parties can't, like, if we can't come up with a consensus position and if we can't agree in good faith, then it's not gonna happen regardless of what we write down here today, I think.
I don't think it could, it's fine. I mean, we can add that to item number three that is now two, but I think either way, we've agreed to look at.
That, yeah, that's a good point. In three, it says shall remain in effect until are renegotiated. It's the original paragraph three on the first page. So it does, I mean, there is language in there for the ability to renegotiate, so I think I'm good with that. I mean, we could put renegotiate in good faith, but-
It's our intention to renegotiate the entirety.
Again, I'm not sure what binding effect that has, or, you know, real operational difference. Okay, yeah, great. Thank you. I think I'll go ahead and call for a vote. Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So that was unanimously approved, the consent to assignment of lease with, as mentioned, striking the original paragraph two. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Just one, I was gonna say, yeah, a logistical question.
I was gonna say, I think Liz will have the, for that's last, you know, for-
Okay, so we'll sign that before we leave this room. And work it through.
Misses?
Thanks, everyone. Okay, can someone remind me what the second agenda item is?
That is the discussion consideration amendment to the intergovernmental agreement, IGA with Lake County School District, expedite land transfer to Lake County Government. It's led by me and Jackie who's not here, so I guess led by me.
Do you, do you want to, we could take a, I could take a minute and get some water, if we want to find-
If you need a minute, we can do that. I don't know if Jackie's-
Jackie's on her way. She's coming to me.
Okay.
Okay, so I didn't know she was available.
Can we take a one-minute break while I grab some water?
So do we put a second for that?
Is that gonna be in the, it's just the two documents?
The consent, the assignment and sanction inverment is between them and CEC.
This one?
Was that the issue?
She's really on here.
She's really nice.
And then the assignment assumption of lease is good to go?
Yeah, it's not the last report.
For the-
Yes.
Okay.
So Jackie, you did?
She planned on coming, but-
Yeah.
She, I think she was coming from a different appointment, so.
Oh, okay.
I mean, we can-
Do you think she need?
We, I, I mean, I, we can do it in terms of what the background is on this, in terms of the request arises out of the fact that there needs to be, we applied for grant funding to address remediation issues on the property. And the grant law is requiring that the property be held, the title be held by the county in order to get that grant funding. So the original IGA that was approved by y'all and reported in January had a, essentially, an option to purchase or type situation. And we need to expedite that to go on and tee that up. So the amendment that's before you is just to amend that provision of the IGA that allows the county to go on and purchase the property now.
Okay.
Versus having to wait, because originally it was, that option was not viable until after the infrastructure essentially was in the ground and stuff like that. So this just allows the county to go on and take title in order to qualify for the grant funding for that remediation.
Was there another, so when we originally did this, it was going to be an RHA project. How is the RHA incorporated into that IGA, and do we have to also revise that?
Well, the issue is that right now they are party to it, so we're not redoing the whole IGA to remove them. They are a party to it. This is just to amend that one provision of it that says the county can go on and buy it and hold the title of the property.
Okay.
So that's the only thing really that's being addressed.
Okay.
By this. The school board has approved this, I understand the board approved it, and the RHA approved it last week, October as well. So we're the last entity to the agreement who hasn't approved it yet.
Just quickly on that, just as, I mean, I don't know if it's a question or just a statement, but I sit on the housing authority board and the school board. I abstain from those votes and did not participate in the school board discussion of this matter. So I think it's okay for me to vote on this side of the transaction, but I could also abstain on this side too, if you think that's cleaner.
I, well, it's completely, yeah, I don't, I looked at it, and I don't see a direct conflict in you anticipating those in. But I would want to caution, if you're concerned about the transaction, you can certainly step back and say that because of your multiple hats that you're wearing in regards to the different entities, that you'd be more comfortable.
Again, I feel like I've been crystal clear in those meetings and not participated in trying to sway the discussion that occurred there.
In this, in this instance too, it is just essentially accelerating the inevitable. I mean, this was going to happen at some point down the street anyway, so it's, I don't think it's-
There's no payment or, like, so, yeah.
And I don't think there should be any contest. And in fact, by doing this, it allows us to attract more resources into the community to help, help pay for the remediation fees.
Yeah, no, I don't think there's a significant conflict, so I, I just wanted to say that in this meeting.
Is the, the deed restriction example in here in exhibit A is an example, correct?
Yes, and that's something keep in mind. So if things do change, that is what is needed just as an example. So it's the way the language reads in the IGA. It's substantially in that form, but that gives us the flexibility to make changes because none of us have a crystal ball as to what circumstance might be when we actually start. ball as to what circumstance might be when we actually start transferring those properties, so that they'll transfer with that deed restriction.
Yeah. I don't have any questions. I'll move to approve the amendment to the intergovernmental agreement regarding the lease and transfer of real property for affordable housing purposes between the county and the school district.
Okay, I'll second. Any further questions or discussion, just on the I G A amendment? Okay, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So the amendment to the I G A with the school district is approved, and we can move on to-
And so the next one, resolution is actually to authorize the acquisition of the property. It is teed up, in fact, it was scheduled for closing tomorrow. Of course, I just discovered that one of the environmental reports that had been produced earlier has expired, so we need to get that recertified through the E P A, which should not be a major deal, but it just means we'll be prepared to go to closing tomorrow. But otherwise, everything else is the same. So this is just to authorize the acquisition of the property to go to closing.
Okay. I don't have any further questions, so call for a vote?
Well, let me, I don't know, no, I don't, I'm trying to find the, I just see two amendments. Do you have the resolution?
I believe so.
The resolution to change?
I did put the resolution, it is right there. Or at the second.
Um, alright, I just wanted to read it with this title. I'll move to approve resolution of Board of County Commissioners of Lake County, Colorado, resolution twenty-four thirteen, a resolution of Lake County, Colorado, authorizing the acquisition of certain real and personal property known as lots one through sixteen, block twenty-one, Stevens and Lighter subdivision, U S survey number two seventy-one, Lake County, Colorado. Thank you.
Can I have a second?
Seven, I'll second it.
Great. Any further comments or discussion?
Another minute.
Okay, thanks, staff, for working through this. Oh.
I've got the Sarah's next, ma'am, you're going to be down before I can get there.
We'll talk through all the amendments we did, like, no amendments, no amendments. Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Resolution twenty-two-four dash thirteen is approved, and I think that concludes our business today. We, oh my, what's it on? It is one fifty-one. Yes, we'll adjourn. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.
You're signing that.